The following program is sponsored by the Greek, Ely's Radio Shack Dealer 570 Altman in downtown Ely, and brought to you as a public service by Georgetown Media in Ely, Nevada. Ely City Council Special Meeting, February 3rd, 2021.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor Robertson?
President?
Councilwoman Person?
Here.
Councilwoman Flanders?
Here.
Councilwoman Spear?
Here.
Councilwoman Alworth?
Here.
Councilwoman Meacher?
Here.
City Clerk Lee?
Here.
Treasurer Trask?
Here.
Building Official Christensen? He's here by Zoom. City Attorney Nizoli? Not through text. City Fire Chief Swor?
Here.
That's all.
Thank you. I'm not sure these mics are on. Now with that, we'll open the meeting for public comment. If you will please state your name for the record. You'll have three minutes.
Good afternoon. My name is Lori Carson, and I'm here to speak on behalf of the issues so far as the building inspector. As owner of the project, so far as the Justice Center, the new courthouse, the county is very, very concerned about the negative impacts that not having a building inspector will cause our project. Right now, we are ahead of schedule and under budget. If we run into an issue of having inspections that are not done on time, it'll throw our project off and could lead to added increase in costs. We're very concerned about this, and obviously, we hope that the city will and should have done due diligence to be sure that we don't end up in this position. Because as you must know, it's extremely expensive. We do value engineering to make sure that we do stay on schedule and on budget. The city and the county have an interlocal agreement. If it becomes an issue, maybe there's some way that we can look at that and tweak it to see if we can still keep things right. So with that said, I look forward to things moving as fast as possible, and we're kind of in this together. The building is in the city limits. Otherwise, the county would probably do their best to go ahead and contract with somebody on the county side. But it's within the city, so we need a city official. So I just cannot impress enough with you that how important this project is to all of us. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Good afternoon. My name is Dennis Hornstrom. I'm the Corps Construction superintendent on the job. I'm here just to kind of give you an idea of where we're at on the job, so everybody kind of understands where we're at as far as what we need for inspections. After I'm done, Brad will give you more of the impact of what could happen. Right now, we've talked to the inspector. He's told us that he will probably be out there twice this month and maybe three times. We're still doing overhead, all the MPDs. We've just got a ton of stuff that we're doing at this moment. We still have all the electrical that's got to be inspected. We still have mechanical, plumbing. And then, of course, you got to look at the back end of this. We have the final inspection. This all cannot be done within the next two to three weeks. I wish it could, and trust me. But we're looking at three, four months of continuous inspections constantly going on. We still have panels that have to be made up. None of the panels in the building were made up yet. So I guess I'm here if there's any questions you need to ask me. Now would be the time, so you understand exactly where we're at and how critical this is for us. If I can't get, like I said, any of the overhead inspected, if I can't get the panels inspected, I have to send everybody home. So that's it in a nutshell. So anybody have any questions?
This is public comment only.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. All right. That's pretty much all I have to say.
My name is Brandon Localton, Project Manager for Corps Construction. So I just wanted to kind of go along with what Lori kind of said of working with you guys and just trying to make sure that we informed you of kind of where we're at and making sure that it's transparent of our needs for Brad or someone like that as an inspector on the project and the financial impacts that it could bring to our project as well as the city and the county. If we have to stop construction, I'm not sure of your experience with construction, but the cost impact is more than we care to ever see or even look at with sending guys home and then trying to get them back, whether it's the crew size that we have now that we've been fighting to get and trying to get those same guys back on the project, or just trying to keep going and the implications of guys sitting in hotels and the cost of being out of town. There's a lot of serious issues that can come up with not being able to have some. We have tried to schedule as much as we can for the next month that we have Brad available, but we wanted to come here in the spirit of trying to work with you guys and be part of the solution and letting you guys know where we're at and what we need to just keep moving forward and keep our project and keep the guys here in Ely that are paying for rooms and are bringing business here in Ely and keep our project continuing to go smoothly like it has. Also, to invite any of you that want to come by, you're welcome to come by and see the facility. I know the mayor and a few others have come by. You're all welcome to come by for a tour and just really see the size of the project and how well it's moving. We'd like to just keep moving and keep working here in Ely, and we thank you for letting us be here and let us work here in the county and the city. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I'm not sure what happened with the individual that you hired at the last meeting, but I'd like to know. Also, I want to suggest that you may want to get ahold of Chris Flannery. He used to be the county inspector for the Queen and go into Vegas, see if you take care of him in short term, worst case. Mr. Mayor, I've heard Julie Spear no longer works for the city. The city needs to conduct an audit of that position in the billings. I want to remind you that billing for my property at 490 High Street has yet to be corrected. The city council has been told that repeatedly. There were vehicles on the property that were removed. Vehicles were not along the street. I want those vehicles back. I want to know who gave permission for them to be removed from my property and who it was to remove them. Where are those vehicles located now? I've asked you numerous times. I want an answer, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I'm like billing for 490. I pay every month. I'm at $1,388.08. You need to do something with that position. I want to know if Julie or that position had a bond, and I want some accountability. I don't want to be stonewalled anymore. Mr. Mayor, I went through some of my notes, and one of them goes back to November 9th, 2006, when you had approximately $22,211,000 in unpaid utility fees. That's when Mr. Alworth was on the internet tracks. 2006, and now you claim that it's several hundred thousand. Something's wrong with the math. Mr. Mayor, I have another note going back to November 2006. When I was mayor, I put the city council on notice. I hereby notify you that I am vetoing the action taken at the Ely City Council meeting held on October 26, 2006, on item 814 regarding has the city collective info, all of its background from garnet, mercantile, penalties, and interest. Still no answer. You need to shore things up, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, at your city council meeting held December 10th, 2020, I asked you that before you accept the reservation of Brad Christensen, the building inspector, that he needs to account for the missing brick, the proper repair, and the pathetic inspection you did on my building at 570 Altman. You folks make me buy a permit. I did a lousy job, and then he says, "I hired a poor contractor." He's the one that approved it. I want my building made whole. I want it whole before he leaves. Either he pays for it or the city does. It doesn't matter. I want it taken care of. Mr. Mayor, I'm again reminded the city's yet to reimburse me for the expenditure that I incurred for curing the sewer problem in 681 Parker that was the city's responsibility. Again, interest 2% a month is being assessed in addition to the late fee. The amount is January 2021, $7,921.64. You need to address that, Mayor. Quit with me off. You're not going anywhere. I need my money.
Any other public comment? Hearing and seeing none, we'll move on to item three. Items for discussion, possible action only of the Ely City Council. Item one, Mayor Robertson, discussion only, consideration of the current options to provide city building inspection services. And I would just like to note real quick, I'm not sure what all the handbringing from the county is. I have spoken to a number of people from the county who've reached out with questions about this. Our full intent is to hire a building inspector, not only for the county's job, but for mining and other projects going on around the county that we use purpose. There is a lot of construction and a lot of permitting, just with homeowners, it happens, that we don't want to delay hiring. Certainly, we don't want to delay the public works project at the county for the new Justice Center. Tonight, we're going to be making efforts to do that. That did give us a lot of notice, but as the council's aware, the last person that we offered the job to has had problems finding housing here, and so they declined the job. We know we could have housing issues here, and that's something the county and the city have both been working on for the last year or more. But there's still a lack of houses on the market, and rent is high, and they just weren't able to make that work for them, so they declined the offer. But we're still moving ahead on that. So anyway, this is a discussion only item for the options. Our HR manager has a few things of information to share, yes, on what's happened since the last meeting and what's on the table now.
Okay. I did reach out to the other, well, this one other applicant that you guys interviewed that was a possibility, and he also declined. Wages was another issue. I don't think these applicants really put much effort into looking into our area because they were all a lot higher than we have ever paid, even an attorney. So that's an issue too, the wages for the group that I qualified applicants that we did have. We have received an application, but at the time, and did we disperse those? Okay. I asked them to hear, it was requested, and I brought what the advertisement requirements that we had put out for a building inspector. This current applicant doesn't qualify for all of them and the training. So I don't know if we're in a position to hire somebody and let them get trained. There's always the possibility of contracting, hopefully, finding somebody to contract with in the interim.
Jeanette, could you speak a little bit about the range we're offering and how the research was done on that and how it compared to the rest of the state?
Yeah, the research I did on that is I went on Nevada Transparency and looked at similar city sizes of what prices or wages were, and they were anywhere from $50,000 to $80,000 a year. And we were paying the Brad's wages are part of the top higher ones that were on that list. So that's where I came up with that price range or the wage range.
So we're fairly competitive with the rest of the state?
I feel we are, unless I'm missing some totally, but that was where I got my information from.
Well, I had to discuss that issue with our current building official as well, and he also felt the wage, wages we were offering were competitive with similar positions elsewhere in the state.
I did reissue an ad again through the ICC again, and I have yet to hear from anybody on that.
The current applicant that we had discussed, like our HR director said, isn't qualified as to possessing the certifications and some of the experience, but we wanted to put that in front of the council for the same reasons like we were doing the fire department positions. If we can hire someone who's already here locally, that that overcomes one of the big obstacles is getting someone to move out to the most remote city in the lower 48 states and already find housing. We know they're already committed here, and that there's a possibility. Maybe we thought that we could offer them the position at a lower rate with a schedule, a strict schedule of obtaining those certifications. In the meantime, also contracting for contract services to cover some of the other bigger jobs in the interim and kind of work them into that if they're committed to the area and committed to the position. But that's certainly for the council to consider and decide. And we had reached out to one of the applicants, the initial applicant, and asked them to contact our current building inspector because their concerns were, it's coming from a larger department where they would probably only do one or two type of inspections, and someone else does the scheduling, going to a department where they then are responsible for the schedule and all the inspections in a 10,000 mile, 10,000 square mile county. It was a little hard, it sounded like, for them to wrap their head around, and they felt that they were in danger of having to spend 60, 70, 80, 90 hours a week doing this. And that's just not the situation we're in. It's a much different situation than larger cities are. Our current building inspector doesn't spend more than 40, 45 hours a week either.
Last time I talked to Brandon, he had said that he hadn't received that phone call. I reached out to a couple of them, and the one that I heard back said, "Yeah, I'll give him a call, but I don't know that Brad ever heard from him."
So, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Do we know if we have options to contract, people to contract with in the interim? If we do decide to go with someone who's uncertified?
The situation we're in tonight is for them, is for you guys to decide whether or not that's something you want us to put out on RFQ4 or RFP. There are at least one local individual and contacting Chris Flannery or some of the other people who've worked here before who are still in the state who could do a few inspections here and there is certainly not a bad idea. And like I said, that would at least cover some of our larger, more time-sensitive projects in the counties as well, if we can't find someone by the end of the month. But, and I'm sure the county realizes this as they hire people as well. It's hard. Working out here is definitely a certain type of shoe, and it's got to fit just right for people. And getting someone who's willing to come out and live in a place as remote as Ely and do the kind of job and the different kind of way that it happens here because you're the only one in the department aside from your admin assistant, that's a Cinderella type decision. It takes a little bit of researching, and I don't think that's how we do it, Mayor.
I can't help but think it's imperative that we put out an RIT immediately for contract services just because it's apparent that we're not. I mean, regardless of how we go with the full-time position, we've got, we don't have time to just sit around and wait.
Well, that's what this meeting's for.
Sure. So I definitely think that that should be on top of the list.
So there's the, there's that option, contracting in the interim. There's the current applicant who came in since the last meeting, who is less qualified but a local. And then there's, we're continuing to advertise, and those are the two. Those are the three options on the table. Are there anyone that I'm missing or any other ideas from the council on what we might do?
I have a question on the less qualified person. What would be the legal ramifications if they gave maybe a bad permit hour or did catch something? Would the city be liable for that?
They'd be liable. So we wouldn't want the less qualified person doing anything they were not qualified to do. So if it was hiring, so what I heard was potentially hire the less qualified with a contracted person that can do the more qualifying until that person gets qualified.
Okay.
And so I would think potentially keeping that out there or keeping the application open to see if any others come in. But we wouldn't let someone do anything that they were not qualified to do.
Well, and that's the question I think myself and some of the council has had is, what is, what is the absolute qualification we need? And what's the qualification that's nice to have? And that's the, with this, I discussed a little bit with our current building inspector, and there was some difference, and I think he's on the line with there. As I understood it, there was some difference between a building official and a building inspector and kind of the certifications required there.
Well, I would, yeah, I recommend that you ask Brad these questions, that he can help you out.
Is Brad, Brad, are you on the call?
Yeah, I'm here.
Could you, did you hear that last bit? And could you speak to the qualifications that are required for a position like this? The minimum versus what's not?
Well, the building, the building official portion of it is more of an administrative.
Right.
The building inspector portion of it is obviously, you know, officially speaks for itself. Those are the ones that are actually going out, doing the work in the field, doing the actual hands-on inspections. The building official, I don't think in your case, I don't think you need a building official. You need a building inspector to handle the different trades. Well, the MPD that the Corps is talking about, so that's, that's the mechanical, plumbing, and electrical is what they're, is what the acronym is for. What, does that help you?
What are the certifications that we need someone to be holding for this? Or are there any?
Well, there's, there's numerous certifications, but you've got a, you've got a building inspector, so you've got a commercial building inspector, residential commercial inspector, and then you have a regular building inspector, which covers all of that, encompasses all of it.
And those are certifications with like continuing education credits and tests they take and the whole bit?
Exactly. It's done through the International Code Council, which represents the books that we go with, we use. And then there is, there's CDUs are required every three years to maintain your accreditation.
Are these certifications you feel like someone could get in a matter of months? Or is, I mean, what goes into that?
There's a lot of, there's a lot of testing that goes in, which means you got to prep, you got to prep for those tests, or timed exams, and you have to get a certain percentage to be able to get the certification. So it just depends on the aptitude and the knowledge of the applicant with a testing person.
Yeah, did you have something to add?
Yeah. There we go. Jim, Mr. George.
Yeah, one thing I'm going to ask tonight, because I think that we have got to less than four weeks to get this done. I went and visited with Corps one week ago because I felt that we're, the city, and you're in incredible liable situation by not having a building inspector, at least a plan. I talked to both Clerk Lee and Treasurer Trask about that same day, and there was no plan on the table. Now I see this consideration of current options, and I know you guys have both been meeting on it. When would we have run an option? I mean, I think right now we need to take a contract almost instantly because we've got a $30 million project out there. And if that thing gets delayed, but one week, with the number of employees that have, this city's in serious trouble. Because we're like, we have a contract with the county for inspection services, and we have, I don't know how many people have ever worked there and took that tour. And I can't even imagine, I can't even imagine that. So we really should have something on the table tonight for us to go down with a contract that we got released up for. Jeanette did tell me that she's waiting for guidance from the council, I guess. Well, if we had waited, that'd have been the second week of February. So I think that we need to decide tonight. We're going to find a contract, if we can get a contract for service. I do know we have, when we did some work at the convention center, they had to bring in a different inspector to do part of the concrete that we were bored in. So I know there's, if somebody in Elkhorn that comes down, but that's not going to be cheap. I'm sure this is going to cost dearly, and Corps can probably add to that more than anybody. But when you start bringing in inspector to cover that and all the mechanics, I think, this thing that you have, the same thing we seen last time on the building inspector inspection qualifications. But I think the issue tonight is we have got to decide if we're going to try to reach out some more. I don't think we have time to reach out. I don't think we have time to train. I think we have got to make a decision to have a contract inspector, at least on our major big jobs here, that could go under penalty. That's what I'm thinking. So that's the only option I see on the table tonight. Training is not an option.
Like Councilwoman Meacher said, I think we can, we can pursue more than one option. I agree that the, we need to, well, and the second item is for you guys to decide what to do, but I would highly encourage the council to, like you said, and just go out for RFP for some contract services so that we can get that in place prior to the end of the month. In the meantime, I think we also need to still do something to fill this position, whether that's someone who's less qualified or continue to advertise. The other option that's on the table tonight for the council to decide is if they want to interview this less qualified candidate, and that would happen next week. At that meeting, if they'd rather not do that, that's also a decision they have to make. You guys have to make.
Do you know if he has any of the licenses? That last guy that we hired, actually, all three we interviewed had the list of all the, all the current licenses they held. Do you know this local person?
He doesn't hold any licenses, but he does have building experience, and he's local, and he would desire to do that, and that's, that's what the council has to decide.
I agree with that. We need to act quickly on this. I think we should consider saying if Mr. Christensen would contract with the city. Because Ed brings up a good point. That's a big project after $30 million, but there's also mines going on, mine that he needs, whoever the person is is going to have to travel to. And then in the interviews with the other building inspectors, we told them 30% of their time is traveling to Ball Mountain to Easy Junior. So that's the thing. We just have to keep our minds open. We can't focus, we need to focus on Corps. No problem with that. I have no problem with that. But we've got responsibility in the county. So it comes back, I wasn't on the, on the council when they got into the contract with the county to provide that service, and then somebody can inform them why they did. The county could not get an inspector. I don't know. But I agree 100% with Ed. We need to get something rolling. And it's a short-term time, and I would also recommend, or think, after we think about that, this quote-unquote "less qualified" individual. If we could find a contract inspector, have that individual be on the payroll to shadow that inspector so he's getting an idea, learning on the job, learning.
I do have a question, though. Jim had suggested maybe contracting with Brad. Is there an issue with his purse?
That's what I'm going to say. I don't think you want to discuss specifically who you want to do this with tonight because there's issues here that we would have to look into. I think if you want an option to go for a contract person, you approve that, and then we take it from there. then we take it from there.
We have to advertise with like an RFP, just to take it all?
Yeah.
Whether that's Brad or several other people.
Yeah, professional services.
Because to, to speak to the, as someone who works in construction, I mean, having an inspector change halfway through a project is really inconvenient, to say the least, and I'm well aware of that. I've had that happen on a number of projects, and it's certainly not ideal.
What we can do is, we can advertise it in the paper, but you can also specifically send it to people, so.
Don't forget, Jeanette. I've got a question. Okay, I appreciate Michelle's answer, but, so, or question, so throwing no names, if an individual retires from his employment with the government agency and then we're looking for professional services?
We would be on a case-by-case basis, wouldn't that like, not?
So do, do we?
The question on purse is purse retiree is limited on what they can earn, number one, plus you have to wait ninety days if you're putting them back in a purse-eligible position. Contract is not a purse-eligible position.
But if an individual's retired, starts his own business?
He's fine.
He's what?
He can, there wouldn't be a problem with that, on the person.
So, so that would become a professional service?
Correct.
ABC Building Inspection, and he could, professional service, correctly found the law, which I might be, do we have to even go out for that advertised work?
Which we, you're asking for your question for Michelle.
Yeah, so there's exceptions for professional services. I think it would be best to put this out through proposals.
Well, and because it would probably behoove us to have at least two on the, on the list of people we contract with that we could call up and say, hey, there's an inspection here, there's an inspection there, can you come up and do that? And we have like a per inspection, per inspection contract fee.
Kind of like we did with the attorneys that went down.
Yeah.
And then just my last comment, I'll turn it over to Ed. You know, the way that Jim died, make sure everybody understands, it says to provide city building inspection services. This is city slash county, we have a contract with the county, and that's what covers that same agreement then, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I think there's a discussion.
There's still a discussion, yeah.
I don't think we need to move into action.
Well, let's make sure there's no discussion left. Any other discussion from the council or questions?
Well, in reality, if we were to go out on a contractual basis, we could be doing that on a thirty-day basis, and if we should find somebody for full-time, that contract we didn't know the void after thirty days. And if we're going to pursue every avenue that is available, right now, in all indication, we should do, look into finding a contractual effect in order to pursue having our problems being taken care of.
Sure. Spare point, further discussion. Commissioner Carson?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Just a quick comment, as you move forward with this, there is one thing that I really came to mind that I thought was important that you consider. As you said, we're very remote. It is hard to get companies to come here and, and work, it's, it's not really sometimes cost-effective. So in the predicament that we're possibly facing, if Core Construction has several different electrician, electrical companies or whatever, drywall painters, HVAC, these companies also have other jobs going on. So if we have to hit pause, that will snowball on down. These people may have to leave and we may not be able to get them back, and it'll take us valuable time to possibly get people in as replacements. So as you move forward, that was something that I really, I should have mentioned first, you know, when I spoke the first time, but that would, that would be something that really would concern us as the owner per se with this job. So, I mean, and that's a real possibility. So that's why I, you know, I talk about the urgency and how concerned we are. Thank you.
I believe, and I understand the position they're in, but I feel like with what we're doing tonight, that we can have this on the second agenda in February and have this settled. So especially if we actively reach out to certain people, advertise it in the paper next week, I think we can get this done without too much problem.
Jim's got a question.
Text, Jim, is, I know Brad's on vacation, he's going to be on vacation, so do you know if he is willing to come in off vacation to do some important inspections?
This month, that part, I don't know. We would have to talk to him.
I think he's already scheduled.
I think he's, but he's scheduled for when he is in, for what he's got planned, so I think he's pretty much covering everything between now and the end of the month. It's after the end of the month that we need to worry about, is the way I understood it.
Any other discussion in the council? Hearing and seeing now, I'll close with item one, and then we'll move on to item two. Mayor Robertson, discussion for possible action, selection from current options discussed above to provide city building inspection services, to possibly include a release for request for qualifications for provisions of contracted building inspection services.
I mean, if you've had more discussions, I'd like to entertain a motion that the re-instructor or treasurer HR person to go out and put an RFP out for professional services for a contracted building inspection service person, and then like the second part of that would be to reach out to the, the other qualified persons or even unqualified persons that maybe we could get qualified over the long term, but we, I don't think we've got a timeline, so it'd be just to move to, to go out, to get a contracted service and to continue to try to get a regular building inspector and/or less qualified person in, try to train.
In that motion that I'd like the council to consider, whether or not they'd like to interview this woman applicant next week?
We'd have to, I think.
What's that then?
I would think we'd interview, once he puts that out, we'd be interviewing him again with the next meeting, I would hope.
Well, that's your decision to make, whether you'd like to interview this applicant who doesn't meet the qualifications next week.
That does meet them?
Does not meet the current qualifications, but is your local?
I would have a problem with that. I think we should, see where is that?
So your motion includes interviewing that applicant next week?
I'd say to have any other applicants we have, not just.
Interview any applicants we have right now?
Interview applicants.
Sure.
Okay.
Is that fair enough?
Absolutely.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, any further discussion on that? Yes, Jim?
I just have a question, I'll direct it to the experts in the Core management team. Again, you know, you got, I guess, lead, lead load, air conditioning, AC, drywall people. Can they, and I'm just asking out loud, if we were to get this person in training, would they say, okay, here, come in, the nails are six inches apart on drywall? When it comes down to the write-off, I know you guys do professional expert work, I know nothing wrong, is there any way we can use their knowledge? I'm just asking the question to help off on some of this inspection, because that's just the question I have right there.
Yeah, we're willing to help in any way.
I appreciate it.
Random report. We're willing to help in any way we can. We have some really good contractors and we brought them, especially for my drywall, like you mentioned, screws that are willing to help. Definitely, if you have someone to shadowing a consultant, we're here to bounce questions off or to help with anything, with any of our knowledge or expertise in any way. Thank you.
Right, and it wouldn't be a sign off?
Any further discussion regarding the motion on the second one, if I'm mistaken?
Yes.
Hearing and seeing now, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes by the zero. With that, we'll move on to item four, public comment. Please state your name for the record, you all have three minutes.
I just wanted to say thank you. We appreciate it and just taking a positive note, we know we're not any different than any other projects within the county or the city, but we wanted to come here in the spirit of letting you guys know where we're at and kind of what was going on with our project, but not that we were setting ourselves apart in any way, but we thank you for taking this seriously and trying to find an option, and like I said before, we're willing to help in any way we can.
Any other public comment?
No? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm surprised you guys realize now that you have a housing shortage. I've only been trying to move a couple of my properties for a couple of years. Do not bring in a rookie, do not bring in someone who's not qualified. Your attorney said that they put you in a liability situation. I'm not going to sit around and just pay taxes and pull weeds on my property. You've got a problem with Brad, you've got to bring in somebody who knows what they're doing. Don't worry about the mines. When I worked for Kennecott as an inspector, the city never sent anybody to any of the properties that Kennecott had, let alone anyone else. It was M. John O'Shaughn. You guys expanded it, looking for additional revenue. You worry about in-town, M. John O'Shaughn will take care of the mines. Mr. Mayor, I'm going to give you also some additional memos in regards to curb gutter ADA compliance dated back October twentieth, two thousand and six, several properties still undone. Again, you look at your inspectors and the people you have on staff. Mr. Mayor, I want to remind you about the December tenth, two thousand and twenty meeting, I asked before you accept the resignation, Brad Christiansen, the building inspector, he needs to count for missing brick, so on and so forth. I want my brick, I want my building made whole. Mr. Mayor, I've been to City Hall numerous times over the last few months to pick up permits, we moved my home at four ninety. I want a dollar amount, and I'll pay that, I'm not saying that I won't pay that. Your building inspector is the problem there. Mr. Mayor, on the corner of Ogden Crawford Street, a new meter box is stalled, eleven and a half feet from the property line and a couple of bollards next to it. That was Mr. Keith Carson's property, I want to know if he paid for that, and why didn't he put in the curb and gutter according to code to protect the meter box? You have codes, and yet you're not adhering to them. Mr. Mayor, you need to solicit a newspaper that's fair and balanced, I paid for ads back in April twenty twenty. They've yet to run it. When someone commits fraud, you need to pull their business license or hold them accountable. You're not doing that. Mr. Mayor, I've reported to you several times over the previous meetings that numerous RVs, possible squatters are setting up throughout the city, I want to know if you're building them for landfill, water, sewer. I want to remind you that I got two citations for my tenants being on there, and I had to remove them, yet you're allowing people to park, live on the city streets. You set up a code that if they apply for a permit, I want to know how many permits you've given out. If you haven't, you owe me for three different properties. I've lost thousands of dollars.
Thank you, Jeremy.
Okay, you have liability there, Mayor, you need to address that.
Any other public comment? Hearing and seeing now, we'll move on to item five, motion for hearing.
Oh, move.
Do I have a second?
Sure.
Thirty seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? You in turn, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.